Recording please. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Covington City Council meeting for Tuesday, September twenty sixth. In compliance with state law, city council's special and regular meetings are held in a hybrid format with in-person, telephonic, and virtual options for public viewing and participation. With that, we'll call this meeting to order, and Krista, if you please call the roll.
Yes, I am here, Councilmember Porter.
Here.
Councilmember Hartsock.
Here.
Councilmember Hargehausen.
Present.
Councilmember Simomo.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith.
Here.
Mayor Wagner.
Here.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you, Krista. If everybody could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you for that. First up is approval of the agenda. Regan, do we have any changes tonight?
What changes, Mayor?
Thank you. Look for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. Moving into reports of commissions, we do not have a CEDIS report tonight. Is there anybody here from youth council tonight? All right, go to Arts Commission. Patty, welcome.
Oh, yeah, that'd help.
There it is, right here. It's on.
Bedazzled that thing.
How does it work?
Otherwise, hold it if you want.
Okay, I'm just gonna hold it.
There you go.
Um, I'm not sure how much else I can fill you guys in on it, based on the information we provided at our meeting this evening, but I just want to let you know how great it is for us to collaborate with you guys and let you know what we're really working on and get feedback from you. Um, then we take that information and we just kind of morph it into what we're working on and hopefully bring some more great art to the city. So that's it.
Thank you, Patty. You usually leave it later. Thanks. Next is Equity, Cultural, and Social Justice Commission. Have anybody here for that?
David?
Nope. Human Services Commission. We do not have a Parks and Recreation Report, and that brings us to Mr. David Connell with the Planning Commission. Welcome.
Well, hello. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Um, I am from the Planning Commission. I've been here before, and I'm back again. In summary, the Planning Commission was very busy this last quarter, as we had lots of activity and progress in several different areas, and even more is planned in the near future. Exciting times. Uh, let's get to it. We had the following agenda topics for the July twentieth meeting. Public hearing was held to consider code amendments to Covington Municipal Code, Chapter sixteen dot ten, State Environmental Policy Act, to increase the State Environmental Policy Act SEPA thresholds. The public hearing had one public testimony from Ben Taylor. He's the King County Government Affairs Manager of the Master Builders Association of King and Stoneridge Counties. He recommended this proposal amendment be completed and go forward. Following the public comment, the Planning Commission deliberated on the proposed code amendments and voted six zero to recommend approval to the city council. Second public hearing was held for the twenty twenty-three Comprehensive Plan Docket. Following no public comment, the Planning Commission deliberated on the Parks and Recreation Dock at L A twenty-three D S triple zero one and voted six zero that the council approved the comp plan amendment. Staff is currently processing these two code amendments with Commerce and SEPA, so council should see these two items in upcoming meetings. City staff and the city consultant Burke also introduced the Comprehensive Plan Housing Analysis, and the city staff brought back the equity approach to the Planning Commission for further review and discussion by the Planning Commission. We had the following agenda topics for the August seventeenth meeting. Community Development's Director Selena Lyons and Park and Rex Parks and Recreation Director Ethan Newton gave a Ethan Newton gave a presentation on the application for the Comprehensive Plan Docket, a Parks Element. Brainstorming took place by the Planning Commission for the Comprehensive Plan Open House that was slated for October. Planning Commission went through planning discussions for the upcoming joint study session with the city on the equity approach, which did take place on September twelve. We had the following agenda topics for December, September twenty-first meeting. Planning, uh, commission chairs and vice chair elections took place. We had a D squared results with David Scalabrine being the vice chair and, uh, yours truly as the chair. Phase two of housing needs assessment, review, and discussion, with lots of facts and data from staff and Burke with positive results for planning, future planning. Public engagement update. We had a targeted stakeholder engagement summary twenty twenty-three from staff and Burke, and the interview, interview results were quite informative. We had interesting public comments for this particular meeting. We had, uh, Katie Lance and Axel Jimenez from Kentwood High School, who respectfully submitted their proposal to the city for painting their school colors on certain areas of the Faust Roundabout and the streets leading directly into the school with a school crest. Request to also name the highlighted incoming school street to Kentwood Way. Staff is working internally to determine the process and the feasibility. A college student also attended from Marius Falcone from Arizona with close family ties to Covington. They, he attended the entire meeting, wanted to find out more how city commissions work, and he, to get more educated about all that. He found it enjoyable and may attend future meetings. The community activity planned outside of regular commission meetings, we, uh, attend, I attended, and maybe several of the other planning, uh, commission members attended an informational meeting on ecology's clean energy coordination, which took place on August twenty-three. In April, Washington State lawmakers passed H B twelve sixteen and S B fifty-three eighty to ensure that the sighting of new clean energy projects happens in an efficient, sustainable, and equitable, equitable manner, think best, as well as other items that, for that clean energy. Please note that the state Covington staff and the planning commission are navigating these new topics in real time, and that we are also waiting for additional guidance from the state in the form of model ordinances or basic legislative guidance. Planning Commission Subcommittee over the Labor Day weekend developed an invitation statement from the Planning Commission about the Comprehensive Plan Open House. The viewpoint of the Planning Commission invitation stressed the importance of it participating in the comp plan process and attending that open house. The Comprehensive Plan twenty twenty-four, twenty forty-four update open house is planned to take place on Thursday, October nineteenth, and there will be separate live and virtual meetings. The Planning Commission, the planning staff will lead and facilitate that, those particular meetings, and prior to the meeting is planned that the Planning Commission members will be distributing those open house packets to possible attendees during the first week of October. We really do want everyone to attend. The significant agenda items for the next planning commission meeting are on November second. Will include the public hearing for the SEPA exception exemption codes amendments with the planned result for a planning commission recommendation for authorization to the city council. Will be handling, uh, once again, another equity approach review, revisiting that, and a comprehensive plan update, which is going to introduce the Docket Council recommendations. Glad to provide you with all of that information in this status update. We caught up a lot in that last quarter, and are there any questions?
Does council have any questions for David?
I just have.
Go ahead.
A comment. So great to hear such a thorough report, and clearly this commission has been really busy. Not arts. We just heard what you've been doing.
Thank.
The other commissions need to catch up on their summer breaks here.
Well, and I apologize, I missed Katie and David online.
Oh, okay, great.
So, but David, thank you very much for a very thorough update, and thanks to the commission for all the hard work.
I will let them know. My pleasure.
Thank you. All right, Katie, I apologize. Um, I missed you online, so Katie Lance with the Covington Youth Council. And before you begin, I, I have not personally been able to tell you, I love the Mystery Machine Band, so good job. Thank you. And I'll turn it over to you, Katie.
Thank you so much. Good evening, council members. I would love to be in person, but unfortunately I got a cold from school, so I can't be there. Um, just a recap of our last meeting last week. We had a very interesting public comment from Sam Pace, who is a, um, Realtor here in Washington, and he was interested in having like a joint meeting between us and him, and he'll talk about housing and what's going on with like the housing crisis and affordable housing and other things along those lines. Everyone on our, uh, commission was very interested in hearing about that. Uh, next, we came up with a new recruiting flyer. One of our, um, council members, Abigail, is making that flyer as we speak, and we're gonna be putting it up around some schools. We also have a couple new, uh, applicants that we are excited to see. Um, last, uh, we were thinking about inviting the city council and the Mystery Machine that you had just mentioned to Kentwood's trunk or treat at, um, our trunk or treat that we hold every year. It's also a food drive for our Kentwood Drama Department. So that would be really nice if, um, the Mystery Machine could make an appearance. Uh, we, as a youth council, would also be there in costume with the Mystery Machine helping to, uh, free some food. Um, other than that, I, I saw you, Jeff, at the day of concern, but I'm not sure if you saw me. A couple of us attended. And then we also are planning on attending the Club Rush at Kentwood and then the Kent Lake Recruiting Event. Uh, we're planning on attending Make a Difference Day. And then we also have our street cleanup coming up, as well as the tree lighting where we have decided to take Santa letters again. And we also, last thing, had our elections. So I was voted chair again, and then Harshleen was voted vice chair, Ryland Scribe, et cetera, et cetera. Any questions, council members?
Yes, when, can you, the date and time again for the trunk or treat at Kentwood? I missed that, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, that would be on Halloween night, October thirty-first, and then it would be earlier, probably, I wanna say five.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. And yes, I did see you, and there are several other youth council members there, uh, collecting food, so thank you very much for that. Really appreciate that.
No problem.
Anybody else have any questions for Katie? Thank you very much, Katie, and please pass on our thanks to the entire group. You're, I know you're losing your adult leader, uh, Shelley, but, uh, I'm, I am confident we will find somebody. It's hard to fill her shoes, but we'll find someone to help.
Of course. So sad. Goodbye.
Thanks, Katie. Have a great evening.
You as well.
Next is David Scalabrine with Equity, Cultural, and Social Justice. I apologize for missing you, David, earlier.
Welcome.
Not a problem, Your Honor, and thank you, and thank you, council. Sorry I couldn't be with you, uh, tonight. Uh, this is a very busy time for me right now, so I'm actually still working, so this was actually a nice break for me to break away from work, uh, to report to you. Uh, we've had a lot going on since we last reported to you, uh, prior to our July meeting. Um, and so in July, uh, we identified, uh, two objectives from our updated work plan, uh, which we reviewed with the council at our joint, uh, study session on July eleventh. One being a proposal that we will like, uh, more than likely be bringing to the city council in the near future, and one being a joint, uh, project with one of the other commissions. Uh, in August, uh, we celebrated National Civility Month. Hopefully, everybody got a chance to see our updated website in August and see what Civility Month was all about. Uh, we've just, we discussed updates, uh, to the proposal to the city council that is in progress, that we'll be hopefully bringing to you in the next, uh, couple of months, as well as the joint, we got updates from the, uh, joint project that we are looking at, which was, uh, to be done with the youth council. And, uh, we reviewed updates to the, uh, celebration calendar, as that is continuing to be updated. Uh, for September, uh, which our meeting will be, uh, this coming Thursday. Uh, for September, we are celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month from September fifteenth to October fifteenth. Uh, hopefully, you've had a chance to visit the, our website updates and to see the books that we have proposed for children, youth, adults, as well as adults, and then some of the amazing recipes from the Hispanic culture. And then also, uh, we have done this, uh, if you've been, obviously, in the front office there at, at City Hall, you may have seen the, the celebration display that we did in the little display case, uh, there at City Hall to, uh, recognize Hispanic Heritage Month. Uh, this month, we will also have a presentation by, uh, Dave Skipton, who is the president and, uh, board of directors for the Kent International Festival. Uh, we're gonna be talking to them about, uh, develop, how we can develop contacts with the various cultural communities in our area, as well as discussing some tips on how we can start to build some sort of a cultural celebration here in the city of Covington. Uh, we'll be reviewing updates to, uh, that for the proposal that I mentioned, as well as the joint commission project. And then, uh, for, we'll be looking at December celebrations. There are several celebrations coming up in December, and we had thought about how we might be able to hopefully, um, tie in with the tree lighting, um, festivities of, um, and make, bring some sort of a representation, uh, by maybe doing a candlelight service for, um, Christmas, Hanukkah, and Kwanzaa. Uh, so we'll be discussing that as an idea, um, and see what we might be able to do. And that is, uh, that brings us up to our meeting, uh, this coming Thursday.
Great. Thank you, David. Does council have any questions? No, no questions. So David, thank you very much, and please pass on our thanks to the entire team. Really appreciate all you do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Uh, let me check once more. Is there anybody from Human Services online? I do not see anybody. All right, so let's move into, um, well, first off, thanks to all of our commissions and commission members for all the hard work they do for our community. And then let's move into public communication. So if council could please join me in front of the desk. All right. Uh, first up, we have a proclamation. Sorry. Thank you. Uh, thanks, Cole. First up, we have a proclamation for Fire Prevention Week, and Deputy Chief Aaron Tireman, if you could join us up here.
Thank you for being here tonight. So we have a proclamation, whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, as homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire, and as cooking is the leading cause of home fires and home fire injuries, and heating equipment and smoking are the leading causes of home fire deaths. And whereas this Fire Prevention Week, with the message, cooking safety starts with you, pay attention to fire prevention, and this year's focus on cooking safety works to educate the public about simple but important steps they can take to help reduce the risk of fire when cooking at home, keeping themselves and those around them safe. And whereas the city of Covington recognizes the value of all information received from the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority, and would like the citizens of Covington to support and cooperate with them in order to maintain a safe community. Now therefore, we, the city council of the city of Covington, do hereby proclaim October eighth through the fourteenth of two thousand twenty-three as Fire Prevention Week in the city of Covington, and urge all citizens to support the public safety efforts of the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority, provider of fire and emergency medical services in Covington. And with this, all seven of us have signed this proclamation. We'd like to give this proclamation to you and to your entire team, and thank you to everybody.
Appreciate it.
And all that you do. Is there anything you'd like to say?
Yeah, just the, uh, our, uh, fire prevention folks, which include our, uh, public educators, they work tirelessly to try to put us out of a job, which is a great thing. Um, but, uh, have a fantastic group of people who work in the background every day to make sure that our, our citizens are safe, and, and, uh, cooking safety is, uh, is a big one, so um, I'm privileged to be able to stand up here and represent them tonight. So thank you. Great. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, President. That's fine. I do it all the time.
Yeah.
I think it's got my name on it, so I probably knocked it over and you didn't. Thank you. I got big shoulders. Next, we have a proclamation for America's Safe Schools Week, and Chief Easterbrook, if you could join us up here. Thank you for being here tonight.
So we have a proclamation, whereas excellence in education is dependent on safe, secure, and peaceful school settings. Yet the safety and well-being of many students, teachers, and school staff are unnecessarily jeopardized by crime and violence, such as substance abuse, gangs, bullying, poor discipline, vandalism, and absenteeism in our schools. And whereas it is the responsibility of all citizens and leaders, especially those in education, law enforcement, government, and business, to enhance the learning experiences of young people by helping to ensure fair and effective discipline, promote good citizenship, and make schools safe and secure. And whereas schools make substantial contributions to the future of America and to the development of our nation's young people as knowledgeable, responsible, and productive citizens. And the observance of America's Safe Schools Week will focus public attention on school safety and identify, develop, and promote innovative answers to these critical issues. Now therefore, we, the city council of the city of Covington, do hereby proclaim October fifteenth through the twenty-first of two thousand twenty-three as America's Safe Schools Week in the city of Covington, and ask all citizens to join us in this special observance and recognition of the value of safe schools in our community as secure and peaceful places for learning, teaching, and working free of drugs, alcohol, weapons, and fear. We'd like to present this to you, chief, and, uh, thank you for all that you do in the schools and around in our community. Is there anything you'd like to say?
Thank you. Uh, we'd like to thank the Kent School District. They work very well with us, uh, particularly the teachers, uh, administrators, and, uh, particularly school security. They do a great job of, uh, keeping the students safe, and, uh, just want to thank you for this presentation. Great.
Thank you very much, chief.
Up the picture. All right. Thank you for that. Next, we'll move into our first of two public comment periods. Speakers will state their name, address, and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate, and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. For attendees participating virtually, click the raise hand button in Zoom. For attendees participating by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. Once the city grants you permission to speak, press unmute if participating virtually, and dial star six to unmute if participating by phone. Notice to all participants pursuant to state law R C W forty-two dot one seven A dot five five five. Campaigning for any ballot measure or candidate in City Hall and/or during any portion of the council meeting, including the audience comment portion of the meeting, is prohibited. And with that, I'll look to see, um, Alex, you have signed up to speak. Would you like to speak? Yep, come right up. Pardon? Axel, okay. And I think I turned the microphone off, so. Okay. Welcome.
Hi, I am Axel Jimenez. I'm part in representing Kentwood High School on our plan of renaming the street the K-way and painting the sidewalk and the intersection in our school crest and our colors. Um, unfortunately, Katie Lance is not able to make it in person, but she is here online, and will be giving you a more in-depth presentation on our plans.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
And Katie?
Hello. Um, I would love to present the flyer we have for the proposition, if I could. Um, yes, thank you.
Is she able to share?
All right, I'm just gonna share the proposal we have. So the Planning Commission was talking about, um, our public comment last week at their meeting, which was where we presented them with this idea. Uh, this will be coming to you eventually, but we just wanted to make you aware of what was going on with this proposal. Uh, the Planning Commission is working internally, as they said, on this proposal, and if it is feasible, but our proposal was renaming either the green highlighted street, which technically isn't a street, to Kentwood Way, um, is currently labeled Kentwood. And then if that is not feasible, the highlighted section of one sixty-fourth pictured could also be renamed if possible. Um, we are also asking for this intersection to be painted um, with the Kentwood Crest, which is pictured as well. If you guys would like, I can send this to Krista, and we can get, um, printed copies. If I was there in person, I would have had copies, but unfortunately, I have a cold.
If you could, uh, Katie, I didn't mean to interrupt, but yeah, if you could please, um, email that to Krista, that way we can each get a copy of it.
Of course.
Thank you.
Of course. All right, that's pretty much all.
Thank you, Katie.
Mayor, can I jump in?
Yes.
Um, I'm assuming, council, do you want her to just work with staff on?
Yes, please.
Putting something together for this? Okay.
Yeah, Katie, go ahead and work with, um, Regan and, uh, Krista and staff on this presentation, and, uh, count, uh, staff can bring it forward to council at a future date.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
You bet. Thank you.
Great.
I don't have anybody else listed. Is there anybody else online wishing to address council tonight? I don't see anybody raising their hand. There will be a second opportunity for public comment towards the end of our council meeting. Uh, next up is approval of the consent agenda consisting of items C one through C five. Is there approval to? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. Moving into new business, item number one. Is to consider appointment to the Planning Commission.
I move to appoint Kenner Aronson to fill position number five on the Planning Commission with a term expiring August thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Kenner Aronson to fill position number five on the Planning Commission. Beth, would you like to speak to your motion?
I would. Um, Kenner came prepared to interview for both planning and CEDIS, and I think he would do well on either position, but his background in construction, he's been on the receiving end of permitting and codes, and so, um, I think he has, uh, an interesting perspective. One of the thing, one of the two things that really struck out to me, uh, outside of his, uh, experience is that he's in that mindset now, wanting to give back and charitable, be charitable in his community and, and giving of time is equally important as, um, treasure. So I appreciate the willingness to serve, and as he's looking at growth, the focus, um, is to also look at how growth will impact and be attractive for people moving to the area, but also also look at how growth will impact and be attractive for people moving to the area, but also balancing the needs of people that already live here, and I think that's a really unique perspective. And I can also go on and on, but I'm sure that he's got some other stuff to say, so.
Okay. Thank you, Beth. Debbie, would you like to speak to your second?
Thank you. Um, much of what Beth said, I I don't need to repeat. I think he brings unique qualifications to the Funding Commission. Um, not only in wanting to give back to our community, but his skill set in project management around construction. Um, very impressed with with his skills and and the job that he does um, at Blue Origin. Um, I I also like, you know, he talked about organizational capabilities um, and really wanting to help manage the growth in Covington. He thinks we've, we're in a great position to grow, but wants to see that managed. And um, he's also got a passion around environmental protection and stewardship stewardship of our land, and we haven't heard a lot of um, people talk about that, but that's important, and he comes with that that passion and that um, background. Um, I think he'd be a great addition to the team.
Thank you, Debbie. Anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? All right, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Kenner Aronson to fill position number five on the Planning Commission with a term expiring August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven. All those in favor state aye. Aye. Any opposed? Kenner, congratulations. It's moved to new business, item number two, consider an appointment to the Covington Economic Development Council. We have interviewed three people, Kathy Fosch, George on September twelfth, and then we interviewed Kenner and Felicia today for one position. I thought we had two positions open.
See this?
Yeah, is there only one?
On the city side, just one. The chamber has a couple.
Okay, so I always thought it was two and three, and then it reversed two and three for us.
Uh, we filled the ones.
Okay, okay. Thank you. All right, does Council wish to take any action tonight? Does Council wish to bring this back at a future date? Since there's no.
Yes. Yes, I thought there was one position. I honestly had forgotten that we had another interview candidate.
Okay.
And I have a hard time understanding the chamber versus city one, so.
So it's, it normally rotates because there's five people from the chamber and five people from the city. One year, the chamber selects three and the city does two, and then the following year, the city chooses three and the chamber chooses two, but evidently we filled one position already in July.
That was dominant. Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
And when does chamber choose?
They choose it on their own at their.
Same time, the terms, what Jeff's saying is the terms are just staggered, whether they appoint three or two, those are staggered.
But I mean, when, what date are they moving to?
That's, whenever they find someone, there there's no set.
I think they've filled two positions and one is still open.
I think they have two still open.
Oh, two still open.
Two positions currently open that expired July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
So, and then we only have one position left because we filled dominant.
Yeah.
And then, so we have one open position.
Correct.
And we have three candidates for that one position still. And then the chamber fills their positions on their own. So if Council wishes to bring this back, Beth?
I'd like, I'd like to move to appoint Felicia Daniel to fill a position on the Covington Economic Development Council with the term expiring July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
A second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to appoint Felicia Daniels, Daniels, to fill a position on the Covington Economic Development Council. Beth, would you like to speak to your motion?
Um, I would. I think she came very well-prepared. Um, she has a a great business background, accounting, finance, um, and HR. Um, she seems well-versed in what's coming down the pipeline with the developments in the area and understands the the necessity of working collaboratively uh, with other commissions, with people on her own, uh, would be on her own, uh, seat with CEDIS and with coun- uh, council. And um, I just, I think she'd be a really great, she brings a great skill set and a desire to serve community.
Thank you, Beth. Jennifer, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes, um, so I was very impressed with the number of questions. I don't think we've ever had that many questions asked during an interview, and they were very targeted, very thought out, very um, on topic. Uh, also, very excited about um, Felicia's eagerness to get in front of businesses, introduce us, you know, Covington, and being part of the community and really showing what uh, Covington can do for businesses. That's that's the energy that um, we see and need to continue to see in our Economic Development Council.
Thank you, Jennifer. Anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? It's been moved and seconded to appoint Felicia Daniel to fill a position on the Covington Economic Development Council with a term expiring July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Congratulations, Felicia. All right, that concludes all of our new business for the night. Next is future agenda items. Does Council have anything that they might see at a future agenda? Sean?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I have asked that a the city reach out to the county about getting a presentation on the Washington Tracking Network environmental health disparities uh, tool. And so um, in light of our last meeting um, with the Planning Commission, we talked about its equity lens, this is a tool that many state agencies use to help um, determine if communities are being disproportionately impacted from a public health or environmental standpoint. So uh, I've given Regan a a number, naming a number of a person that, I was putting him in contact with, who can actually helped um, develop the tool and can present to us on uh, what it can do uh, and how we might be able to incorporate it into some of our work here in Covington. Uh, it's called the Washington Tracking Network. You just type that in, it'll come up, but it's, it's not totally intuitive. There's a couple of things you'd have to you'd you'd have to know in order to get it to do what it needs to, it can do. So, anyway.
So is this something that we would incorporate into our comprehensive plan?
Um, well.
Are you envisioning this?
Yeah, I think right now, just introducing the tool to the city, so you can see how it works, and because uh, after we talked about planning and, you know, identifying equity issues, you know, it it does provide additional data, uh, demographics, um, looks at different types of environmental and public health impacts on those communities. Um, so what I'd like to do is have it introduced, and then we can maybe in in the future talk about how our different departments might be able to use it.
Yeah, Regan?
I I believe Sean brought this up at our last council meeting as well, and so we do have them set to come on this uh, November fourteenth.
Okay. Look at that.
Yeah, yeah, already happening. Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Sean.
Yep. Thank you.
Does Council have anything else they'd like to see at a future agenda? Note that our next uh, uh, council meeting is October tenth. We have interviews, uh, starting at five twenty, and then we have our council meeting at seven. And with that, let's um, let's move into Council staff comments. Start with Chief Easterbrook.
Good to see you all again. I was on vacation from the last meeting, and I have no comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Uh, Ethan's still on?
Yeah, I'm so.
Oh, oh, yeah, he's still here. First, I don't look at the screen, and now I'm not looking over there, so I apologize, Ethan.
It's all good. Uh, nothing for me tonight. Thanks.
Okay, sorry, Ethan. Uh, Dawn?
Uh, nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Dawn. Selena?
Good evening, Council. Nothing for me tonight.
Thanks, Selena. Uh, Casey?
Uh, nothing for me tonight either. Thank you.
Thanks, Casey. Uh, Mark?
There's no executive session tonight, and I have no further report. Thank you.
Thank you. Regan?
I am still on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Haven't lost me yet.
Always.
Yeah. So I just wanted to report out to Council on the King County um, uh, Local Services and Land Use Committee meeting that was held this morning. Uh, part of their agenda was to discuss the battery energy storage system um, ordinance that's being proposed in the county. There were a lot of public comment on it. I was surprised to see PS, a representative from PSE made public comment. Uh, he was urging the committee to form a uh, a subcommittee to explore these and how to best incorporate them into into the code. There were comments asking for a year moratorium be put on the development of of these type of projects until it can be further studied. Um, uh, unions were represented, um, strongly uh, a proponent of these uh, for obvious reasons. And so a lot of good public comment, uh, and then another comment about this should not be cited uh, at that Covington site, and Chair Perry of the committee uh, said it will not be cited there. Uh, she said there's critical area um, on that site, and for that reason, it will not be cited there. I I don't know that that definitive of a statement was wise, but um, there uh, currently, a best could still be located on that site. Whether it pencils out for a developer or not is the question, uh, because mitigating that critical area would be extremely costly, and to put the size of facility you need to pencil out for a developer, you may not be able to put that size in that spot, but a smaller size could go there, so. But currently, right now, that is the best at the site just north of Covington is off the table, and the permit is not active. So I just want to give her a a report on that. Uh, also, with our two thousand twenty-four legislative priorities and policy document, we've been working on those, compiling ideas. Leadership team discussed that at a meeting with our lobbyists this week, and so we'll put something together and then bring that to Council, uh, I believe in October, uh, we'll bring it to you. So, that's all from me. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Regan. Krista?
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Christina?
Not just, Mr. President. Um, a few days ago, we had our, one of our, just few um, in-person skip meetings where the um, KCHA uh, did a really great presentation um, on asset man- management and development, uh, specifically within, with a focus on South King County. Um, there's a lot of cities that have concerns with House Bill eleven-ten, and that's not cookie, we just can't have it be a cookie cutter bill that fits everyone, because what we're noticing is from the bigger cities down to the little cities, it just it's not wise, um, whether, whether it looks like um, upkeeping the current um, affordable housing that the larger cities have versus building more, so you'd be losing the current stock. So we're just, we're just figuring out how to merge the house bills, the hospital and um, and make it something that the cities can can do and use, and specifically for what skip and move forward with. So that was a really cool um, meeting. Um, we'll get back to you. I'll get back to you as, when we figure anything out, but ultimately, um, day uh, Mayor, Mayor Ralph and Mayor Bax, right? Yes, they have been petitioning to the state and representing and really being a voice for for a more customized package for cities. So, that was good to hear. Other than that, I'm struggling prayer.
Why is that?
I know, seriously. I think I might make it, I was thinking, like, October, and then we hit November, and I just don't think I'll do it. I hope I'm not with you because November, because for obvious reasons, but um, yeah, that was great.
Thank you, Christina. Beth?
Uh, my husband and I went to the stargazing party at the Covington Community Park on Friday night. That was fun. Uh, we were, we brought our telescope just in case, but there were like seven telescopes there. It was fun. A lot of fun with the kids and um, so uh, we've been wanting to go for several years, and finally the weather worked out right, so uh, it was great to be part of that. Um, I'm looking forward to the open house at Covington Elementary this Thursday, and of course, Purple Light Nights event is Saturday uh, in the Covington Fred Meyer parking lot, and um, getting really, getting, getting my, getting ready to get ready for the budget, the month of budget deliberations, so um, it's coming. I'm waiting for that big old booklet. Wait, when is that? Okay. That's about it, though.
Thanks, Beth. Sean?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mr. Mayor. Uh, I got a couple of things. The Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority met last Wednesday. Uh, we had a fairly uh, light agenda, but we did uh, approve a couple of things, um, most notably the RFA's six-year capital development plan, uh, kind of similar to our track traffic improvement plan. They have projects on there uh, that rotate and um, move on and off over six years, so uh, for development of uh, firehouses, that sort of thing. Um, we also started, considering it's budget um, season, the discussion of the uh, RFA's benefit charge. Um, we have uh, that conversation and set that charge uh, every year, so that information will start going out to um, uh, residents of the RFA. Uh, we also got to see the new, I think I mentioned it to you, the type, I just asked Chief Tyrman about the type three pumper trucks. These are these kind of mid trucks. They're not the super big trucks, but they're not the super small trucks either. They kind of fit that sweet spot, uh, the Goldilocks, uh, so to speak, fire truck with about five hundred gallons, and it's um, uh, designed to really work well in that urban uh, wild interface. Um, and so, uh, I know there's a number of communities that are already, um, have already asked uh, for support, and I think we've sent the trucks out to help support on those, but it it was, it's uh, surprising, standing away from it. It doesn't look that big, but when you get up to it, it's huge, and to climb into the truck, you know, I didn't even attempt it. I mean, it it, it, it was, if I had fallen out of there, I think I would not have gotten out. You know, it's, it's a big truck. Um, we also discussed uh, things that, you know, you you might not anticipate, but the UAW strike is having uh, some impacts on the RFA's ability to get vehicles, uh, and they anticipate that that will probably be uh, remain that way for a while. Um, that some of the vehicles they've ordered cannot be shipped. Um, they'll sit on the on the lots, that sort of thing. So uh, I just thought that was was interesting, but for the most part, it's not anything that's going to impact their ability to to service the community. Um, just two other things, and I know you'll probably mention them, but I really appreciated the food drive uh, this last uh, weekend. It's always one of my favorite events, and I'm always uh, overwhelmed by the generosity of our community and how they're just willing to to step up, and people that are often are going to Safeway not with the intent to give food, and they come out and give us, you know, bags and bags. I remember a couple, a couple, you'll count with two bags and basically gave us the bags and then took one little thing that they'd come to buy. So I was just really, really impressed with that. Um, and as I said, the the day just flew by, uh, I was joking that, you know, I had a, the uh, opportunity and the, and I, the privilege to spend it with Regan, uh, so we've kind of, we're chatting quite a bit, and I noticed the time just blew by, but I I think it crawled for Regan because I talked his ear off, so. Um, um, and then just finally, uh, I really appreciated in the weekly notice about the uh, traffic calming or the traffic issues we're going to put on the upcoming summit agenda. Uh, I think that's the right place to have it, we need to have that conversation, because this is something that's kind of like what we're talking about with um, Kenner having appropriate and um, well-managed growth. Well, we're seeing these communities, people are racing down the streets, and they're asking us to help them find ways to save the rural feel, but also allow for traffic. So uh, kudos to you for doing that, and I look forward to that conversation, so. That's it.
Thanks, Sean. Debbie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, ditto to Sean's, um, thanks. I want to thank our our City Council, um, Women's Services Team for scheduling everything, and Mayor Wagner for putting on the the Day of Concern, and I don't know if you're going to talk to.
Go right ahead.
So I'm just putting my my storehouse board of directors hat on here to just say thank you, um, that. Um, that, that you bring us together to do this every year, more than once a year. Um, and, and to thank our community for really stepping up and taking care of those in need. Um, we do have some amazing generous residents and it was great to be there on Saturday and, and get to talk to some of them. But some went in ju- just kind of, they skated by and they didn't really want the flyer and, but they came out with bags of food. And nothing for themselves. Um, so in, in total, I think everyone's heard, but twenty-three hundred pounds of food, um, that was amazing. And then over six hundred dollars in cash was raised. So high need items, um, I, my husband and I sorted all the food in the, in the truck. And saw lots of high need items, exactly what, what was needed, peanut butter and jelly, diapers. Um, so thank you. I wanted to say that I attended the resource fair and the community services, community, community resource group did an amazing job putting that on. And our human services um. Committee, commission, commission, thank you. Team members were there and it, it was the best resource fair I've seen us do. They were putting out food for the seniors. This was at um Covington Place, so it was really geared to our seniors and they really appreciated it. I um met. And spoke with many people there. Um, they were um appreciative that we put it in their facility for them. Um, but I wanted to just circle back on some feedback that I got about car break-ins and, and thank um Chief Easterbrook for a solution. Um, I had uh some feedback that cars were broken into and when they, when they went to report it to the police department. They were told they'd have to fill out a report online. So one resident took a couple of people down to the Maple Valley precinct. To get forms to fill out because some of the residents don't have computers or don't use them and they were told there that they couldn't fill out a paper. Incident report, it had to be done online. So they were kind of stuck with, well, then we can't report it. I brought this up to Regan and he spoke with Adam and we were told that is absolutely not true. Um, so I wanted to let you know, I reported that back to the one resident that brought it to my attention and she's going to. Get the word out to everyone this week, so that the word will get out. If that happens, you tell the person on the phone, no, you, you can take this report and if they're still not able to get it through, they're going to. Call Adam. He gave his personal phone number to call. Um, so that was good that we got that feedback. It was sad to hear that they weren't able to get. To get the report filled out because everywhere we go, we tell our residents how important it is to report. This crime so that we've got statistics. So that brings me to another thing and that was that Christina and I jointly spoke. At the Lake Winterwood HOA meeting, which was really delightful. It was, it was a full group. This room was full. Um, we got a chance to get up and answer their questions. We also had the crime stats that we were able to share. We got a really nice thank you letter from um the president of the HOA saying how meaningful the information was to them. So I'm grateful that we're getting out and doing that. I think that's all I had. I won't be here for the next meeting and I apologize. So you'll be having a blast.
Thanks, Debbie. Jennifer?
I'm bummed I missed the food drive. I was camping, but yeah, I needed to camp. It had been too long. Uh, and I'm looking forward to all the stuff in October, like. Uh, Beth said it's, it's budget month and I saw the email with the binder. Binders coming, so uh, I enjoy that. I think it's, it's all fun to uh discuss. The future and how to spend our money. So um, that's it.
Thanks, Jennifer. Joe?
Uh, so I had the regional transit uh committee meeting this last week. Uh, I don't know if any of you could guess the major topic that was discussed about buses and. A recent University of Washington study on uh air samples uh, but. The, but uh, King County Transit CEO or whatever, I can't never remember her title. Uh, Michelle Allison talked about that for a good fifteen minutes. Uh, that was the basis of. Of her general manager, general manager, Allison, thank, yeah, there we go. Uh, she talked about that and what they're doing to try to. Fix the airs on, the air quality on the buses, what they're doing for, they got. I hate saying this, but the, the MRF eleven, which is what, you know, we all kind of learned a little bit about that during COVID. The different filters on there, that the buses actually are required to, not required to have that high of a filter quality on there. And they are transitioning all of them to the highest quality filtration systems that they can. Uh, but as we all know, anything to do with transit is expensive. So it is a slow process. What they're getting, what they can do between now and then is. Anyone's guess at the moment, so just be, just be knowing that transit, King County Metro is. Knowledgeable of this situation and they are trying to do something about it, Sean?
The air quality we're talking about, is that for some drug use that's going on? Okay.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's for the drugs. The, the, because there was Sam, uh, trace amounts of fentanyl, meth.
But it was also in the surface too, not.
Yeah, there were certain, yeah, there was a lot. So they're, they're working out plans to do all this. Yeah, so they're, they're doing. They're trying to do something. Of course, they didn't go into a lot of detail about that, but they know, they know about it and they're working on it. Um. It, it, no, it really is. Um, so I, if. If my wife is amenable to it, I think I will definitely be at Kent Woods Trucker Treat on the thirty-fourth, on Halloween. And I did reach out to the Kent Lake uh leadership teacher because he was the one I've been doing my practicum. Hours with for student teaching and I, the Kent Lake Trucker Treat is the thirtieth. To see if he would like to have, if the Kent Lake Leadership Class would like to invite the Covington City Council to that. I have not heard back. I probably won't hear back for a couple of days, but when I do hear back, I will let Regan know, so he can let us all know. Um. I absolutely love the idea of renaming a section of one sixty-fourth uh Kentwood Way. I think it's only fair. Kent Lake has Falcon Way. Why not have Kentwood Way? As an alumnus of Kentwood High School, I fully support this. And let's, let's get this done.
Do the Momo way.
Uh, yeah, when I die, you can do that. When I die, you can do that.
The dirt path.
The, the dirt path leading to my house. Uh, you can do that. Even then Cindy will want it to be named Cynthia Samo Way. I do, I, I thought our interviews were great today. We had two wonderful candidates and I am very happy to see them on our commissions. I think they're going to do great. Uh, it's relatively new sometime, and some, one case, very new residents to the city. Wanting to get involved. I think that's a wonderful thing. Uh, I, our pre-meeting was great. I think it was good, but I would like to see us move. Um, the art selection pieces from the consent agenda to new business to discuss it. If for any other reason than one of them is a three and a half foot tall aluminum structure that no matter. What reinsurance you give me, I'm firmly believing that that in three years, some things could happen to that. And the other one having glass on it, I want to, I want to talk about safety concerns about it and how we can make sure for protections on that. So. Uh, I'd like to see that happen. Other than that, that's all I have and I'm, I'm looking forward to that big old budget binder again. And my table's wobbly. I need something. No, I'm kidding. I'm looking forward to reading.
Thank you, Joe. Um, a lot of these items were already brought up. Uh, Covington Elementary Open House on this Thursday. At five thirty and Purple Light Nights Saturday night. And what time would you like to be there?
If you want to be there six to kick it off, but the tree lighting's at seven thirty.
That's fine. Uh, Mayor's Day of Concern. Well, first, Purple Light Nights. I appreciate the fact that the Rotary Club and others are continuing this that was started. And that this event has gone worldwide. So thank you. Please pass that on to the group. Uh, Mayor's Day of Concern that you brought up, that was an awesome. Uh, it's, my daughters were amazed at how many people would come up out of nowhere to talk to me and uh. And the amount of food. And so Alyssa learned how to ask people because she was very hesitant at first, but she uh. Was very surprised when people came and brought her the food that she'd asked for. So, so yeah, twenty-two hundred and eight. So almost twenty-three hundred pounds, six hundred and fifteen dollars that day, plus five hundred from the Covington Chamber of Commerce. And that's three hundred and some pounds more than last year's Day of Concern. I thought it was lower, but Jennifer Leggett reassured me that it was more. I'll have a question.
Yeah, it was a bit of a slow start, but yeah.
Uh, and thanks to the youth council and other commissioners for being out there. Uh, uh, Mayor's Day of Concern. Maker's Market is Saturday, October seventh at eleven AM at Real Life Church. And then the only other thing is um, South King County mayors are. Um, Mayor Farrell of Federal Way has developed a letter that he's sending to the legislature about police pursuit laws and for them to reconsider it. First, thanking them for what they did do, but to please reconsider it to allow pursuit of stolen vehicles as well. I will be signing on to that um as mayor of Covington. I'm just letting you know that.
Never mind.
Okay. Alright, uh, that is all I have. So that moves into our second public comment period. Speakers will state their name, address and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. For attendees participating virtually, click the raise hand button in Zoom. For attendees participating by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. Once the city grants you permission to speak, press unmute if participating virtually or dial star six to unmute if participating by phone. First, is there anybody in the audience wishing to address counsel? Alright, thank you. Is there anybody online wishing to address counsel? Please raise your hand. Seeing nobody um approach for a public comment, this meeting is adjourned at eight oh six.